Well, we'll also.
We'll did, you know.
Uh.
Ask for volunteers.
I was gonna talk.
What's the stadium?
Oh, I.
Thank you.
I bet you did.
Now I got my husband tonight, so he can drive me home.
Yeah, right.
Clicker is your phone.
Oh, right.
It's absolutely not a little clicker is your phone.
Hell, yeah, yep, get it always picked up.
Congratulations, sir.
Five dollars.
You were out and come down and covered in person and then Josh got hit with a board truck stuffed in our parking lot.
Snap again, yeah, that's okay, not a big deal, it all worked out.
Yeah, he still had a good story on it.
Yeah, well, yeah, great.
Well, any money that ends up with one mile.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not very often I even have a chance to go see the swearing in of a new sheriff, so.
Yeah. I actually was trying to look to put on the little territorial building and have it on there just because of, you know, the history of the county.
Yeah. Well. Tuesday was not a good day for any of that.
No.
How Mission Hill, they had a structure call.
Yeah.
Thankfully.
Six oh five, six oh five tonight.
Running out here.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
They were warehouse. You mean, oh.
Is that a fire chief?
No, that's, there's nobody there.
Somebody will have to.
This whole thing, I guess, no.
Yeah, nasty, you guys said.
I just got a few interviews. No, you gave them part two.
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
They're probably hasn't.
If you, if you get to, uh, ball and fire chief, that's my.
Got your stuff all ready to go, your tablet set up like?
I don't know what this, what's this aim?
Oh, they have laser set up for you for.
Well, I hope so.
The intuitive and all that stuff, there's not too much, if you need a hand, send it out for the online.
So how you liking those?
Well, I'm.
So did you learn that, but the learning was going pretty good.
I, 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 I wouldn't assume too far.
That's right, that's right.
I, 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 I would check on you.
I will later, I, I don't, I don't know that.
Perfectly, yeah. I meant to tell them.
I don't, then Patty said she was, I don't think.
Yeah.
You have her to. So now I just.
Why not have that after?
So Foot calls me, I want to say, you weren't in here.
And I don't know. Patty said she was gonna send me the packet.
Don't figure, you're never.
I think that's, is that what I?
That's probably what you get.
There's an. Um, but they won't, it won't get emailed out, it'll get put on this, to you, so you can go in there and check on it, usually gets posted on Friday.
Did you?
Yes.
Yeah.
I gave it to Don.
Gary, can you turn the mics up for the?
What's that?
Can you turn the sound on and I got five fifty nine.
I think you just have to push the button, Joe, it's a button thing.
Wow.
I've never.
I think you're on. I think it's working.
Yes.
Okay.
When I call that, do I say these two yet?
No, not yet. Okay, time being six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of the good. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Karen.
Dan?
Here.
Wanda?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Joe?
Here. For and present, this time, does anybody have a, a conflict of interest they'd like to declare?
No.
No.
I do not, but I would like to reiterate that any claim made by Harmelink and Fox Law Office, I would not be voting on. For the benefit of the new commissioners.
Okay, thank you, I have none. Uh, this time I'd ask for approval of the agenda.
Don, were you gonna add?
Yeah, I would like to add, uh, Dan and I interviewed applications for the Veterans Service Officer today, and we have a recommendation that we'd like to, uh, put before the group to, uh, move forward on hiring.
Okay.
Where would you like to add that?
Do you wanna do that, we have a point highway superintendent, do you wanna do it at ten A, call it? Fit in there?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. This time I would encourage anybody in the audience to make public comment if they so choose to.
I make one. I want to.
You have to come to the podium.
Please come forward, state your name.
I drove on the Tabor Road into town tonight, and that is the nicest that road has ever been, I mean, it's super icy. I mean, we have to consider the conditions, but I just wanna compliment the fact that it was, I felt like the blade had been put down on it, 'cause it was, it had had some chipping away of ice on it, and so I just wanna compliment. Thank you.
Thank you. The nicest comment we've ever gotten. You're invited back.
I just had to say that.
Is there any other public comment at this time?
Yes, I made it just. I just.
You have to go, you have to go to the podium.
Would you come up to the microphone, please?
Is this in regards to anything on the agenda?
No.
Okay.
Guy Stone from here in the town, and I just have some, uh, printouts of the, of the recommendation from the State GOP Central Committee as to how, as to what they're proposing for voting delegates at the state convention, and I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. So I wanna hand those out if I could. We got some independents up here, so I don't know if they need those.
Well, yeah, this would apply.
But tho- those guys and then those two out there.
Albert.
These two gentlemen. And then the sheriff too.
Thank you.
Nope.
Quite a change, didn't I hear this? Yeah. Get two. Major partner with. Anyone else here?
Mr. Markwart.
Of course, my name is John Markwart, West Seal Miss Road, Yankton, South Dakota. Uh, I would just like to thank Joe and Sherry for your time that you've spent on the council for the last four years. Good, bad, or indifferent, Ryan and I are looking forward to sitting in those chairs, but I think that you two people are, should be commended for taking the opportunity and time to spend the last four years sitting up there also, so, uh, thank you very much for spending your time and taking care of Yankton County for the last four years.
Thank you, best of luck to you too.
John, you just saved me from making that same speech.
Would anybody else in the audience care to make public comment at this point? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. We will go on to, uh, approval of December twenty, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes, December twenty-eight minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. December payroll.
Move approval.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, item seven, budgeted cash transfer to highway. Do you have that amount? So we're looking for a cash transfer of six hundred thousand.
Even?
For, what's the reason we're doing that and we didn't do it at the year-end meeting? So. I guess with me, I, I'd like to table this until after we reorganize, and the reason being is, you know, these guys are gonna have to deal with the, the budget, so maybe that'd be their first item.
I'm not sure if she thought it was supposed to have been done last time for last year.
'Cause we just did a budgeted cash transfer for the highway at the year-end meeting.
Pretty big sizable one.
Yeah, and, and I just, uh, to do another one, I, I just, um, we better check and make sure it's actually, is it for a particular one?
What's highlighted is road and bridge, uh, cash and deposits.
I didn't get that, no, and it's not in the packet, so.
Oh, I didn't know that, here, so.
No, yeah, it wasn't in the packet, it shows we're, uh, a hundred and six thousand dollars in the hole in that account. Of what I assume why.
Well.
And it was, e- every year in our budget, when you make it in June, you, we always have to have a couple million dollars transferred from the general fund to the highway fund to cover the budget for that, and that's where this money is coming from. It's a budgeted cash transfer, he did not go over budget, it's just that we only transfer out of that allotment.
A little bit at a time.
To meet the year end, and so this was probably the last one to cover the final expenses. Well, then I would move to approve the cash transfer. I will second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, sign die.
So moved, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll step out of the way and you gentlemen come forward and.
Great working with you guys.
All right, best of luck, thanks again. You bet. Best of luck.
Yeah.
Yeah. I know people who know you.
And here you actually go all three of them.
Well, that's right, Dan has to go in one in, I forgot about that.
Probably says.
And then, one at a time?
I think you're gonna just do it all. I, I think you do, I think you do them one at a time.
Do it one at a time.
One at a time?
Yep. We're gonna do them as long as we can.
Yeah, right.
I, John Markwart, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and faithfully discharge the duties of Yankton County Commissioner to the best of my ability.
And then, Don, can I borrow one of your pens?
Yep.
'Cause I probably bring one, you signed that first line.
I, Dan Clemish, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and faithfully discharge the duties of Yankton County Commissioner to the best of my ability.
I, Ryan Heine, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota, and faithfully discharge the duties of Yankton County Commissioner to the best of my ability.
Don't we get a group picture now for the website?
I'll group picture for the website.
Can we do that at the end?
Let's do it.
Let's do it at the end.
News media is requesting a group photo, so.
Okay.
I'm even talking for the newspaper for that.
Central, front, center.
Center, I'll go over in this side.
The old ones can be in the.
We don't do sense in the county of, oh, sorry, did I say that out loud?
You've never smiled that long before.
And I haven't got the sticky stuff on there.
It'll bounce.
Okay, you guys ready?
Yep.
At this time, I ask for nominations from the floor for chairperson of the County Commission for the year twenty twenty-three.
I nominate Don Kettering as chair.
I'll second, and I move nomination cease, cast unanimous ballot for Don Kettering as chair. That work? So, all in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you. So now I, uh.
No, Ryan has to swap.
You're, you're the boss now, Don.
We got a co-chair, right?
Yeah.
Oh, we gotta get, yeah, we got.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah. And then you will do that, open that up.
For the. Okay, now nominations for co-chair.
Vice chair.
Vice chair, yeah. I open, uh, up for nominations for vice chair. Wanda, you have?
I ca- I'm not gonna nominate myself.
No, but, uh, do you have any?
I, I nominate Wanda Fox Howie as vice chair for Yankton County Commission for the twenty twenty-three year, fiscal year.
I'll second that.
Move nomination cease, cast unanimous ballot, for Wanda Fox as vice chair.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed the same, motion carries. I think our next, uh, our next job is, uh, to go through, um, liaison assignments to different boards and organizations that we have, uh, relationships with. And prior, uh, to the meeting, there was some discussion amongst the, the five of us on different jobs, uh, that they would be willing to take, and, uh, I'll, I'll read those, and if, uh, any one of us wants to add their name to, uh, that position, th- they may. Ambulance lia- liaison, John.
Yes.
Uh, chamber governmental affairs, Don.
Uh, Ms., oh, yep.
Then, we thought, uh, there were all some, some assignments that, that we may eliminate, and, uh, the chamber commerce board of directors, uh, is one mainly because we don't have a chamber of commerce anymore, so that's been eliminated. The next one is the community health nurse liaison, is John. County planning commission and Yankton County Planning Committee, Don. District three, uh, board, Dan. Director of Equalization Liaison, Ryan. Drainage Board, Ryan. E nine eleven committee, Wanda. Emergency, uh, contact commissioner, Don. Dan.
That should probably be you, Mr. Chair.
Don, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Uh, well, the O was looked like an A, so I didn't wanna take a job away from.
I am, I'm on to you now, so.
Just party's chairman, right?
Yeah.
Emergency contact staff member is Patty. Uh, emergency man- management liaison, uh, security, local, uh, emergency planning is John. Extension, uh, board for each liaison is John. Historical, uh, w- w- we eliminated the federal prison camp, uh, community relations board, uh, for this year, unless, uh, somebody comes up with a, uh, a need for that. Historical society board, Dan. Human service center board, Don. Information and technology, Ryan. Joint powers, uh, committee, John.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I would be willing to take joint powers if, if that's okay, that deals with the municipalities and the government, if that's.
Is that.
Try to take some off your.
You got a lot of names on it.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would be willing to do that one, so, okay, yep, and it's good, I think, to rotate some of these out too. Sure.
Library board, Ryan. Mental health board, uh, Don. NAPA rail authority board, Wanda. And Ryan. He went, I said, correction, Ryan. This, yeah, Wanda's not on there.
Do we wanna keep that one, and the reason I say is, I, I don't think they've ever met, have they, the, NAPA? I would propose that we just eliminate it, and if it comes or we need to deal with it, we could appoint somebody at that time, because I, in four years, and maybe it's different with you, I don't, I don't think they've ever met.
I think I've met once, uh, maybe, uh, maybe six or seven years ago.
And I'd, I'd say if it becomes an issue, then we can appoint somebody to that, so.
Okay.
But.
Um, physical plant supervisor, grounds and maintenance, Dan. Road committee highway liaison, uh, would be, uh, Wanda and John. Safety center committee, committee. We don't have any names on that.
I'd volunteer to serve on that one.
It's Wanda. Oh, you don't have.
Yeah. Dan?
Um, and then with the, uh, sheriff would be on that one, in addition, I think Patty is on that one as well on my list.
And I would, and I would stay on it as well.
Okay, okay, good. Uh, center board, Dan. Veterans liaison, uh, Don. Weed board, Ryan. Yankton, uh, area progressive growth, uh, which is now, uh.
Yankton Thrive.
Thrive. Uh, Don and, uh, Wanda. Yankton, uh, County City Planning Committee. Wanda and Dan.
John, would you have any interest in, or Ryan either, you guys have interest in doing that? 'Cause I know when we meet, and you, Wanda, you usually can't. I would. So, it, we, I guess, that's a kind of a fun one, working with the city, you, you went to that one, you had about that.
Uh, Yankton County Conver- uh, Conservation District, uh, John. And Yankton County Rail Authority, uh, Ryan. Any, uh, is everybody, uh, okay with those selections?
Yes.
Do we need a motion for that, I suppose?
Yeah.
Yeah, then entertain a motion, uh.
I would make a motion to it, approve all of the selections of liaison and assignments, um, as set forth by the chairman.
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed the same, motion carries. Next, we have appoint the highway superintendent.
Commit, uh, official newspapers, vote centers, and calendars.
Bullshit. Oh, down here, I'm sorry. Uh, committee assignments, non-official newspapers, vote centers, and the calendar for approval, do I have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, discussion?
It was Dan actually.
Did you guys have any changes on that calendar?
I didn't see any.
Uh, we're doing official newspapers, Preston Dakotin and Observer, and then we're keeping the vote centers, but we're still eliminating, Jodeen's and the Archery Center, so we have a total of, is it five?
Yeah.
Five vote centers?
Six.
Which ones do we have? 'Cause I, I don't. Yeah, let me see. Yeah, that looks good, that looks good to me.
Okay, uh. A motion, uh, to approve official newspapers and vote centers and the calendar.
I would move to approve the Observer and the Yankton Preston Dakotin as official newspapers than the twenty twenty-three calendar and the voting centers as set forth in the handout, just provided.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion?
My only, uh, only discussion I'd have for the agenda items in the auditor, uh, do we wanna keep that Wednesday? I, I, 'cause I, it seems like a long time, it's a basically a week before, and I, I understand we gotta post stuff in, on the online packet, but it's just, like, keep an eye on it, 'cause I know a lot of times people wanna get on the agenda, but the date's already passed, and then it takes them a month to get on, so. I'm fine with keeping it, but if it becomes a problem, maybe we need to look at that down the road.
Any other discussion on that? I, I, I support that, if, if, if it's possible in the office to do.
So, well, let's, let's, if it becomes a problem, we'll revisit it.
Yeah.
But I know the auditor has a lot of work if somebody. But I know the auditor has a lot of work, if somebody comes to scan it in and, and get it out on the packet on Friday, and then that gives people a chance to review it, so.
So, have a little discussion on that. We'll talk about that next time. Okay. Now, we're ready to appoint a new highway superintendent.
Got a vote. Let's, Mr. Chair, let's vote on item nine, I don't think we cast a vote, because we were in further discussions, so I think we still got a vote.
Guess I got to get used to that, I, we, we had a motion and approval, we didn't.
Oh, I thought we did for, yeah.
We had a motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, motion carries. Okay. Thanks, Dan. Now, we need to appoint a Highway Superintendent, and that would be Mike Sodzik. This is something that we do every two years, although I never remember doing it before.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to appoint Mike Sedlauch as the Highway Superintendent.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed the same, motion carries. The added item on the agenda is Dan and I interviewed three people for the Veterans Service Officer position today, and we have a recommendation, I didn't, I didn't bring the, did you bring the, his application?
Yeah, I believe I have it, it was a real tough decision, we had three very highly qualified candidates. It was really tough to decide. But we did have.
Go ahead, Dan, just.
It was, it's Don and I's recommendation to appoint Robert Stickney as the Veteran Service Officer. You guys can certainly interview these guys if you'd like, but that would be our recommendation to the board. And here's an application and a DD two fourteen if you'd like to review.
He's a retired National Guard guy, been twenty-some years of service in the military, just retiring in about ten days, and seemed very competent, has a lot of technological and administrative experience, which is vital for the Veteran Service Office, and we believe would be a very good community activist for the veterans.
I would make a motion to accept or hire Rod Stickman. Rob Stickney. Stickney as our Veteran Service Representative, per Don and Dan's recommendation.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Again, I'd just like to reiterate, we had three very highly qualified, any one of them would have been excellent, it was a tough decision that we had to make.
Thank you, Dan. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed the same, motion carries. Now, your job, claims. Does that, don't look at me in fear, that's the auditor's job. Does anybody have any questions on the claims?
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Motion by Dan to approve the claims, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Wanda, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same, motion carries. Time for public comments. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make comments? If so, please come up. State your name, address, and give us your thoughts. Hearing none, we'll close that. Commissioner updates.
Don't have any for today.
I have none.
I have none. With that, half an hour.
Good job, Don.
I move to adjourn.
Don't, don't comment.
I'll second that motion.
Any farther? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed the same, motion carries, we are adjourned. Right here.